Thank you, those two teams. High school student reports? How are you guys tonight?
Good.
How are you?
Good. Last Thursday night, all high school sports teams hosted a sports night at the high school for students and was there to come and learn about Montpel's program. It was very successful as many middle school students are excited for high school sports. The cheerleading team held a Zupa fundraiser on October 30th to raise for upcoming competitions. They raised a lot of money and everyone who attended had a blast. Last week, the football team helped collect and donate over 100 costumes to the family promis charity for Halloween. Also, the football team won their first game on Friday, October 24th. With a huge student section, the team pulled ahead in the last forty seconds of the game. The game just happened to be the last home game of the season, making it a senior night for the football players, the cheerleaders, and the band. And on top of all that, it was a homecoming game. The princes, princesses, kings and queens first scored it out of the field at halftime. It was absolutely incredible.
Furthermore, a huge congratulations to senior homecoming queen Jenny Lake, who's sitting next to me. Moving on to clubs, this past weekend, the forensics team competed at the College of New Jersey and did very well. In Congress, Brian Moreno and Matthew Pillsbury final, Noah Whiteflash placed fifth and Pernav Kumar placed third. In declamation, Arushi Gupta placed third. In dual interpretation, Claire Sullivan and James Burnett placed third. In extemporaneous speaking, Christopher Meyer placed sixth and Jay Serratt placed fifth. In humorous interpretation, Sean Rowley placed fourth. An impromptu Jay Serratt won. In Lincoln Douglas debate, Andrew Sun Yan won the novice division and Elaine Huang placed fourth in varsity. In poetry interpretation, Claire Sullivan placed fifth and overall, the team placed third. Great job. Friends of Rachel's Club recently elected a leadership committee to promote the kindness initiative set forth in the Rachel's Townings Assembly. Its initiatives include kindness students of the month, a parents appreciation dinner, and other fun events. The MTHS marching band won first place in a competition at Fairborn High School this past weekend. Not only did the band win all captions, including best music and best visual performance, but they also received the highest band, the highest score of all bands who participated. Moving on to our school activities, this year, the homecoming dance was set up differently than in past years. The new layout proved to be successful and we had an amazing number of students who attended. In particular, 140 seniors came, one of the highest turnout since years. The kings and queens were awarded their crowns and DRS at the end of the night, which was a way, a great way to close the amazing event. Last week was red ribbon week at the high school and it hoped to spread awareness on the problems associated with drugs and alcohol. On Thursday, many students wore red to support the cause. The high school has also recently announced its Shop Right Stars winner, which are chosen each marking period for those who excel in certain categories. We are fortunate enough to have them at tonight's meeting.
For the future, Emma Bernstein, Emma Rosnikoff, Brymy Boyer, Arlie Mack, Olivia Gepner, and Mary Feinstein are participating in the Avon Mall for breast cancer. They have raised over $23,000 so far. Winter sports are quickly approaching and students are very excited with the home football season ending. On an amazing note last week, students are pumped for what has become.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for the students?
No, I just want to say congratulations to you Jenny, your homecoming queen. Jay, congratulations on the winning impromptu.
Okay, thank you for attending and good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I wanted to start off my remarks by just making a few comments regarding the lockdown that happened here at Montpel Township High School a week ago on a Friday. First thing I'd like to say about that is give my appreciation to our students and our staff here at the high school for their being able to, in fact, under very, very difficult circumstances and situation, reacted in a very, very thoughtful way, in a way that kept them safe. And we do recognize that it was a very, very difficult and stressful time for everyone. There were many, many lessons for us to learn from that experience. And after having a week to think through some of those reactions and some of the incidents that happened during that lockdown, today, the administration from the high school, myself, Dr. Shorter, our assistant superintendent, Sue Maranello, our communications officer, Steve Taup, our facilities director, and others met with Montpel Township Police Department, Victor Canning, our township administrator, to recap and go over what happened, how it happened, the reactions of those here at the school, and what we can do better in the future. So immediately, we'll be talking to our administrative staff and then eventually, of course, our teachers and other staff members in our schools about the things we have learned and look to make improvements in what happened on that day. I did send very detailed a call to our parents regarding the situation, spelling out step by step what happened at the very beginning of the incident right through till the end. And I think that help of these provide a sequence of events so that everyone understood how the situation developed and how the outcomes came about. So again, we had a lot to learn from the incident and as the police chief said and others as well. And I should just again mention that John Morella, a board education member and chairman of safety committee, along with Charlie Grau and Karen Cordellino, who are also members of our school safety committee, were also present at the event today with the police department. And as the police chief said, it wasn't the real thing. We didn't know it wasn't the real thing would have happened. And so we actually got to practice a real lockdown and provided us with a lot of information to go forward and to make that better. So we certainly will, we'll use those lessons and improve the experiences that we had. Any questions from our board about that? Okay. Our next part of our agenda, our presentations, and we start with, begin with our Shop Right Stars. We are in the audience tonight and I think there are many family members and friends here to congratulate them. And I'd ask Dr. Cordellino, a board education president, to meet Mr. Nazdek, our assistant principal here at Montpel Township High School, to give out the awards to our selected students.
How about that? Cool? Okay, good. I'm excited to introduce our first Shop Right Stars winners for the 2014-2015 school year. As you know, Shop Right Stars is a program that recognizes student achievement in one of five distinct areas in each of the marking periods. Students are nominated by faculty and staff and selected by an administrative committee. Please join me in honoring the Shop Right Stars for the first marking period. In the field of academics, congratulations to Noah Whiteflash. Okay. Noah's not here, but I'll share some information about Noah. During his high school career, Noah has enrolled in seven AP classes, including three this year. In addition to those courses, Noah is one of the finest examples of a student in the science research class. He has also won countless awards for his work in forensics, including appointment as president of the forensics club and recognition as the state champion for original oratory. Also a member of FBLA, Noah contributes to the success of any club in which he's involved. Again, congratulations. In the field of mathematics, congratulations to Jillian Garfunkel. The list of Jillian's tennis accomplishments is extensive to say. The list of Jillian's tennis accomplishments is extensive to say, but I'll share a few highlights. She was a four-year varsity starter at first doubles, a member of last year's group three champions, the team captain and state finalist this year. Jillian helped her team achieve an impressive 21-3 record on the court and is identified as a leader of the team. Her competitive spirit and puritanism is described as being the best among, as being among the best and the THS has ever seen. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Shelby Bernardi. Shelby was amated in part because of the artistic growth she has shown in class and the art club. Determined and motivated, Shelby puts in many hours on her own to achieve her personal goal and idea of excellence. This year, Shelby's hard work has paid off with the appointment of co-president of the art club. She has decided to challenge herself even more by taking two AP classes, one of them being AP art, in addition to the visual arts four class. In all, her service to the club and work in the classroom continue to allow her to share her artistic talents with the MTHS community. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Isha Saxina. Isha was a valued member of the School of Rock before earning appointments as the vice president and now co-president. While Isha is a talented musician, she often spends hours helping her classmates complete projects or master concepts long after the school day has ended. This time doesn't include providing mentoring to students with special needs in high and greenspan classes. In addition, Isha has helped raise $16,000 for the Montpel Education Foundation in 2012, PTC and Matthew Kierd Foundation in 2013, and Project Graduation in 2014. Most recently, she was a key organizer for this year's Relevate for Life and assisted the organization on a School of Rock concert that lasted within six hours. In short, her warmth and kindness is inspirational and needs others to want it in a decade's time to give back. Again, congratulations. And last but not least, in the field of leadership, congratulations to Jay Serratt. There is no better word to describe Jay Serratt, the leader. Jay is the president and leader of our SAC. Jay is the role model and leader of Friends of Rachel and new MTHS club dedicated to inspiring positive change to improve the climate and culture of our school. This work has often led him to meeting, committee meetings with the members of the MTHS faculty and staff. Jay is the voice of MTHS, leading the entire building each day at the pledge of allegiance and morning announcements. Jay is a leader on the forensics team, as the vice president of speech. Jay is also a leader in the classroom, taking five AP classes this year alone. To find a student who has the ability to successfully and positively lead is extraordinary, but to find one so level-headed, kind, and considerate is nothing short of amazing. Because of his leadership, Jay Serratt makes our school a better place to get an education and makes our community a better place to live. Again, congratulations. Congratulations to Noah.
We also want to congratulate our Shop Right Stars parents and friends and relatives. You've done a lot of good things right to have your kids be in this position and situation. So congratulations to everyone. Our next presentation is going to be one that we do each year at this time. It's the student performance report to be 2013-2014. That will be presented by Dr. Casey Shorter, but before we do that, we'd like to ask Noah. I'm only here, Noah. Please come up. Dr. Cordellino has the certificate for you and Mr. Nazdek, I see, is approaching to also congratulate you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay. If you'd like to, go right ahead.
Hello, guys. I wanted to share the nice, kind things that people share about you to get that more connected. Congratulations to you. I said that during your high school career, you enrolled in seven AP classes, including three this year. In addition to those courses, Noah is one of the finest examples of a student in the science research class. He has also won countless awards for his work in forensics, including appointment as president of the forensics club and recognition as the state champion for original oratory. Also a member of FBLA, you contribute to the success of any club in which you're involved. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Noah. So at this time, we will move to our next presentation, which again is by Dr. Casey Shorter, our assistant superintendent, to talk about student performance reports for the 2013-2014 school year. I'd ask a board of education members, so please take a seat in the audience and invite Dr. Shorter to his presentation.
Good evening, everybody. As Dr. Freed had mentioned every year about this time, we spent a few minutes talking about our student performance over the past year. A couple of things I'm going to touch upon today, about 16 slides will be our performance on very standardized testing from last year, including NJAS, ACTs, SATs. We'll also touch on some areas related to club activities and also some areas related to athletics. To start off, I always like to apologize for the green. You can't see those too clearly, but you should have a hand now. This is our language arts literacy assessments for 2014. These percentages encompass the proficient or advanced proficient range of students. And each bar represents something different. You can see the blue bars are district performance and our, the red bars are district factor group. That really consists of schools or districts very similar to ours socioeconomically. And then, of course, how we compare to the state. As you can see there in many of those areas, we outperform districts similar to ours in many of those areas. And also, as you can see, compared to the state, we significantly outperform across the state in the area of language arts. So it just gives you a snapshot and a visual of our performance in grades three through 11 on the NJAS and the HSD. And incidentally, this is actually the last year of NJAS, language arts, and also math, three through 11, because we're moving into the park assessments. This year, we will still administer science NJAS in fourth grade and science NJAS in eighth grade. Those aren't taken up here, but this will be the last year in which we're running these kinds of comparisons. If we move ahead to mathematics, again, similar bar graphs. And you'll notice there are our performance related to district factor group, which are like schools, as I mentioned. And also, the green, which is the state performance. As you can see, consistent with language arts in most areas, we're either outperforming our district factor group schools, or at least coming pretty close, and significantly outperforming our state members with these assessments. And this is pretty consistent, I know at least in three years that I've been doing this here, these are pretty consistent numbers for what we have each year. This is the same numbers, just a little bit different snapshot that you can see. It's tough to see the colors, but you notice the areas in green are the areas in which we outperformed DFG and state by schools. And you can see in the red areas, we fell a little bit short when compared to our DFG factors. Just going to give you a little bit of language arts is on the left side and then the NJAS and math is on the right side. Some additional information, in the language arts area, we actually improved from last year in five of the areas, five of the seven grade levels of language arts. Seventh and eighth grade were a little bit lower this year compared to last year, but not significantly margin. And the math side of things, compared to last year, we improved in four grade levels, grade three, grade five, grade six, and grade seven compared to last year. And we fell a little bit lower than the numbers from last year in grades four, eight, and 11. So overall, pretty consistent performance when you compare year to year. If we move on to ACT scores, again, just comparison with the state numbers and a comparison with the nation. If you notice, I put a plus sign next to each one of the areas, English, math, reading, and science. We did improve slightly in all of those areas from last year. I didn't put the actual scores, it was only about a point or two in each one of those areas, but nonetheless, was improvement. And the positive score was scored exactly the same as we did last year. Again, if you look at the SAT reasoning test, for critical reading, mathematics, and writing, we did increase from last year to this year. You notice there are plus 10 in critical reading, plus 11 in the mathematics, and plus 8 in writing. While at the same time, the state average stayed relatively same, so it increases where pure on that sense that the state average has increased, you know, either a point or less than a point for each one of those areas. So those are nice increases on our SAT performance. And just to highlight our national merit data from the last three years, this is data based on performance of the PSATs. And as you can see, quite well the national merit finalists. Actually, 2000, this is over the last three years, I'm sorry. These were the numbers over the last three years, but sometimes we'll put in multiples of two or three years. Last year alone, we actually had five national merit finalists compared to thirteen, that's included in that three-year count. Semi-finalists, we had five students. Amendment students, we had 23. And our national merit scholar award was last year. This is what was over the last three years, just to give you a snapshot of the time. Moving along to AP tests, advanced placement. As you can see, AP's been reaching 24 subjects, 2013-2014. Eighty, seventy percent of our students scored three or higher. Score of three or five is considered passing, it may be considered college credit, but that's a very high accomplishment. We had 159 students score of five, which was actually a difference of 34. Last year, we had 125 students score in that area, so a significant increase in students that scored five for those AP tests between the two years. Consequently to that, we had 162 students that scored four. That number was higher last year, partly because not as many of them scored a five. So we actually had 188 students last year compared to 162 that scored a four. And then we had 138 last year receive a score of three. That was compared to 131 the year before that. So again, significant increases in the level of performance in the AP exams from one year to the next, which is pretty impressive. And then our advanced placement tests, and if you bear with me, I'll read a little bit of which one of those, which each one of those means. With AP scholars, we had 28. And AP scholars are granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. AP scholars with honors, we had 27 of those last year. And these are granted to students who receive an average of at least a 3.25 on all AP exams. And scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Okay, so that's AP scholar with honors. AP scholar with distinction, we had 48 students qualify for that. And this honor is granted to all students who receive an average score of at least a 3.5 on all AP exams. And scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. That is quite an accomplishment. And national AP scholar, we had 19 of those. And these are granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least a four on all AP exams taken and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So that's national AP scholar. Just to comparison, last year, we did have 30 AP scholars compared to, this is two years ago, compared to 2014. We had 14 AP scholars with honors the prior year, so that number increased to 27. We had 45 prior year, that has increased to 48. And national AP scholars went from 13 in the prior year to 19 last year. So again, an increase in most of those areas. Moving beyond the standardized testing realm, we had, as we always have, our forensics team did an excellent job last year. We ranked in the NSDA's top 100 schools in the country. And we were also recognized as a school of honors, so we're very proud of that. Fifty-five students advanced to compete in the DECA Nationals. And of course, in the area of music, our marching band placed third in New Jersey and tenth in the Nationals. So again, nice all-around performance that day. Outside of standardized testing, we're doing very well in some other areas. Just some highlights in the athletic area. We had 110 athletes receive all-conference recognition. Thirty-six of those athletes received all-county recognition, 10 all-state recognition, and 17 athletes received all-group recognition. And each one of those actually, the first three were an increase over the prior year. And a few students, 17 was actually less than the prior year, but pretty close by five. Continuing with athletic accomplishments, there were 14 individual school records set by our athletes. Two coaches received coach of the year awards, we're proud of that. Three female athletes signed national letter of intent to place for college, and two athletes competed in the track and field to be the champions. And finally, for athletic accomplishments, we had two big section finalists in bowling and girls tennis, which seem to be perennial, you can see. Six conference champions, girls tennis, boys tennis, girls volleyball, girls lacrosse, ice hockey, and bowling. So we're very proud of those team accomplishments. I think this is the final slide. We have more standing champions, again, bowling. Two group three champions, bowling and girls tennis. And finally, second place finishers in more standing tournaments, volleyball and girls volleyball. So congratulations on those performances. So as you can see, we tried to find that balance between academics, athletics, and the arts. And I think once again, another successful year related to those areas. And then finally, a little profile of our class of 2014 graduates. Ninety-four point four percent of our students attended college or university. And you can see the breakdown, actually, the percentage of two-year college, the number of those students increased last year compared to the prior year. We had seven percent of our students attend two-year colleges. Last year, we saw it bump in that number to 11 percent, which was probably the reason why the four-year college rate dropped from 8.9 percent to 83.4 percent. And others, 5.6. So we can see that increase in attendance at two-year colleges from 2013 to 2014. And finally, this isn't a comprehensive list, but over the last three years, just to highlight some of the universities that our students get in. I know Dr. Freed had mentioned on many occasions that our goal is to have kids hopefully get accepted to the college of their choice. These were some of the colleges that students got accepted to Montpel Township High School. And that concludes our very short student performance report. Any questions? Any questions?
Are the DFGs a level of public schools or do they have...
DFGs are all public schools. DFG, for information, there's a number of categories that they base DFG off of. It's the percentage of adults in the community that has high school, have high school diploma, percentage of people that is committed to have a college degree, which also relates to occupational status, unemployment rate, and immediate income. So that's all the communities with public schools.
Finally, as our board of education members to return to the board's...
See you next week.
And we'll continue these questions as we go.
Are there any questions, Charlie?
I noticed that, I think the same thing happened last year, where math scores going from grade five to grade six seemed to have dropped down. And I know the administration is working on that. If you can hear what for anything else, I'm looking at the second page too, can you see? Grade six, grade five was ninety-six point four, which were above the DFG and above the state. And then in grade six, it went down. Is there any reason other than going from the elementary to the middle school? I know you're working on that, I think this was the same scenario from last year, was it not?
Yeah, it was, correct. I guess on the, on the upside, however, to that, while we did drop in sixth grade, it was eighty-eight point three. That is a few points higher than last year's scores for grade six. So while we still fell below the DFG, there was a slight improvement there, which I think is encouraging.
Is Dr. working on that?
Yes.
We have a new math curriculum in place, started this year for grades of six through twelve. And we also have an intervention program at our middle school specifically that Andrea Sabad, Woodring, sorry, couldn't get your name, Andrea Woodring, working with Dr. Sidney Schwartz, my institute at that middle school.
And I knew that, but I wanted to make sure, if any of the public have any questions that we're working on that area. Thank you.
First of all, it's an excellent board card. Again, maybe I have to share my own personal philosophy here, but with the test scores, obviously, we take extreme interest in where our test scores are. There's no question about that. But the real purpose of the test scores, it's not just achieving a high test score as a goal in and itself. It's that you have to get the test score and then ask yourself, why is the score what it is? Are we getting good scores because of good education? Are the scores getting good scores because of good education, good curriculum, or is it because they're teaching the tests? They gain bad scores, it's because of bad education, it's because of bad curriculum, it's because of other factors. It's not a contest. It's not like if where is ninety-six point two, and the DFG is ninety-six point one, it's a win, if it's ninety-six point three, it's a loss. The most important thing that we do here is administer education. And to the extent that the test scores help us evaluate that excellent, achieving a high test score in and of itself should never be the goal.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or questions?
Well, no, I appreciate that, Mike. But one of the comments I did want to make, which, you know, caught my attention when I saw the report, was that the percentage of ten to four-year colleges have dropped, and of course, the ten to two-year colleges went up. So I think we've always been around that ninety-five percent mark of children going to college, attend college. So it makes me wonder what the reasons are that fewer students are attending four-year schools and more students attending two-year. And I see a gentleman in the back who gave me a signal, which was actually my next comment. I'm wondering if the economic times have kind of dictated that. And if so, is there something that we as a school district have responded to, if we actually know that that's the case? If there's something we need to be wondering about through our director of guidance and guidance department? Scholarship opportunities, financial aid opportunities? Are we helping our families through that process well enough so that students, in fact, want to attend a four-year school, they have the economic means to do so? So I think that's an area that's of interest to me, and an area that we'll be looking at carefully.
Paul, I, yes, it has become a strategy, it's become a well-known strategy at this point in time, with the economy being as it is, for students to apply to a two-year school and then leverage what they've learned at the two-year school to a four-year education somewhere else. I, I wanted to comment a little bit further what Mike had to say very briefly. First of all, ultimately, where are we going? It's towards graduating in school and where our students, as you said, Dr. Freed, are attending in terms of colleges. If you take a look at the list in the back to the bottom, there's a great array of some excellent institutions. The bottom line is, actually, every Ivy League school is represented, as well as Stanford, but it's also a very nice smattering of other schools. And the bottom line is, as you've said, and what's most important, as students get into the college of their choice or of not come to Long Island, that's what's most important. Dr. Shorter, you talked about the APs, and it's nice to see that there are more students taking the AP test and more students doing well on the AP test. And that's a testament to the education students are getting here. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else?
I have a question, actually. Follow-up. Dr. Freed, I wanted to say to the two-year colleges, are we tracking, it gets backtracked a little bit. I think one of the reasons that I think it's fairly common now, that we do have a very, very fine two-year college in the area, County College Mars, one of the higher-ranked two-year colleges in the area, are we tracking our students who go to county and then see what are they doing after the two years?
I don't know that we are specifically through our own school system, but the state has devised a way, Andrea, am I correct about this? The state has devised a way to look at where our students are post-graduation and to see whether or not they are continuing to stay in college, whether or not they graduate, and we start, we will start to receive some analysis of that. So it is happening.
Anyone else on the board? Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on the Dr. Shorter's report? Hope for your comments alike. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have one more presentation. This one is actually very brief, but I think rather enjoyable. Recently, as our board and community are aware, we were fortunate enough to transform the athletic fields here at Long Island County High School, creating a turf baseball field and in the outfield, a multi-purpose field, and taking an area that was used only for practicing into a second-girl softball field, also turf, and allowing opportunities for our marching band, for other practice situations to take place on these new turf fields. Joseph Cardell, who is the boys' varsity baseball coach, was very excited about his team having a brand-new facility to play on. And he was in touch with someone who was able to provide us with, I'll call it a tour, of our new fields. I did actually offer a tour to our board of education members of the new field. Not everyone could make it, but tonight, we'll have a two-minute tour of our new athletic facility. So I'd ask the board a little more exercise to take another quick seat in the audience, and I'd ask the Mars to give us a little hand to get that started. Just a comment, for part of this tour, you go, you actually feel like you're in
The only thing that was missing was seeing like the people running in slow motion like Charlie's in fire.
Charlie, did you see that? Were you up in a hot air balloon doing that? Were you up in a hot air balloon doing that?
The cigar could break the flow up.
That was really nice. Is that going to go up on our website?
Well, Coach Cardell gave us permission to use it in any way that would be of benefit to the school district and the baseball program. So we think that's a good idea, we certainly can do that.
That was nice. It's on Facebook. It's on Facebook, and there's an article that's going on. Nice.
So I thought the board would, the committee would enjoy that.
Nice little respite. Okay, well, does this administrative report?
No, for the...
Thank you. Committee reports?
Okay.
Mike, policy?
Policy committee met October twenty-eighth and discussed other policies. We discussed policies number twenty-four thirty and twenty-four thirty-one. That's co-curricular activities and athletic competition. We had discovered there's actually an inconsistency in the two policies. In the co-curricular policy, we had requirements that says to participate, a student must have a one-point-seven-five grade point average and also have to complete a certain number of credits that follow the preceding year. That was actually missing from our athletic policy. So we brought the athletic policy to line with the co-curricular policy to enforce those requirements also, because we think it's important that our athletes also maintain high academic standards to be able to succeed. Policy fifty-five sixteen, remotely activating communication devices, dangers of selling telephones. Was addressed because of some board of education concerns about the topic surfacing as an area of interest at one of the schools in their cell phone policy. Policy number fifteen twenty-two is abolished, has to use school planning policies no longer required. Policy number fifty-three oh five, health service personnel is revised. It eliminates the specific services that a non-certified school nurse can provide. Men indicates instead that the non-certified nurse can perform services permitted simply under their license issued by the state where nursing executives in the district more flexibility in using these nurses. Policy number fifty-three oh six, health services in non-public schools. Discuss the policy prescribing the school district's responsibility in providing school health services to eligible students who are enrolled in non-public schools. Policy fifty-third three oh eight, student health records, prescribing the school district's responsibility in maintaining and transferring student health records. Policy number fifty-three ten, health services, we revised that pursuant to discussion to Strauss Esme, minor revisions. New policy fifty-three thirty-nine, screening for dyslexia, requiring every school district to screen students who have exhibited one or more potential indicators of dyslexia. And we also discussed a potential new policy, recommended by Strauss Esme, having to do with transgender students, and we decided to defer that to our attorneys for further review.
Any questions on the board?
Not that, but moving to curriculum, trying to set up the meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other committee reports? John, do you want anything from safety this morning or...
The only thing I want to add is that we will be conducting a safety meeting sometime soon.
Thank you. Any delegate liaison reports? NJSPA? Anybody who runs workshop on the board?
Karen, I actually did prepare something, but I think I'll hold up for next meeting.
Well, I didn't prepare anything, although I'd like... Let's see, a few of us attended workshop at the New Jersey School Boards Convention, held every year down in Atlantic City. It's a wonderful learning opportunity and also a great networking opportunity. Paul, and I had the honor of doing a workshop along with two other sets of board presidents and superintendents on executive governance, and it was very well received in the cafeteria room. And as expected, Paul did a wonderful job. And I had the good fortune of, well, not just me, but anyone in attendance at a particular reception on Wednesday evening had the opportunity to meet Commissioner Hespin. I made sure I met him. I made sure I met him. And told him how I felt about the superintendent's salary cap. He listened politely. And their new cap is that it has, the cap has brought diversity to the position. So I asked him if that's the case, and since we have now people of greater diversity in the position, it's okay to cap their salaries. And he had a response to that question. But everyone knows how I feel about this. It's damaging to our school districts. And I said that to them. So I got, I feel like I was able to relieve some pent-up tension that I had been feeling that I had not had an opportunity to express our displeasure with superintendent's salary cap directly to the commissioner. And so we were able to accomplish that for some small part on that evening.
This on top of, of course, a handful of us had gone down to the Department of Education office to speak to individuals at the Department of Education as well. I don't recall, but did Governor Christie say that he wanted more diversity in the position when he brought about the superintendent's salary cap? Was that his intention?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, not that anyone else is aware of, but mine else. Are there any other?
I, since, I'm sorry, but since you brought up the building to maintaining an effective governance team that you and Dr. Freed were involved in, I can't let it go without saying, as a board member here for five years, sitting and listening to the two of you and the compatibility between the two of you, hearing the quality of speech that the two of you had as prepared, and this is not to say anything negative about the other two districts, but the quality and effective leadership that I saw in Montpel Township versus Somerset Hills and Mount Oral. In the sitting of the audience, I was quite proud, recognizing how far our district has come. There was a quote that you, you had, Erin, "We set goals and vision, and then we stepped way back." And that is what this board has been doing to allow the administration, our very gifted administration, to handle the day-to-day activities. It doesn't happen in all districts. And this district has been forward in a very positive way because of the camaraderie, the collaboration between the administration, employees of the district, as well as with alongside the Board of Education. But it was for me, as a longstanding board member, a very proud moment watching the two of you. And I congratulate both of you on statewide level to show as you did.
Thank you. That's very generous. Yes, Charlie?
Yeah, I also attended the School Boards Convention. And although I was not at the meeting when Karen and Paul were there, because I know Matt was there, I know Andrew was there, I went to another in-service session, if you will. STEM education. It was very, very informative. I know they've been integrating Montpel Township before. But I did get some comments back from people that were at them because they knew I was on the Montpel Board. They were very impressed by the conference and especially the program where you all were involved. Unfortunately, I didn't get to meet Commissioner Heskey because after you scared him, he left.
I noticed that.
We couldn't get to him before he left. But I was at that same affair, and he ran out before I could throw him down the stairs. But I think it was very, very worthwhile. I would encourage as many board members as possible in the future to know. It's a very worthwhile learning situation. And I think we draw a lot back to the district, both from a board member perspective and administrative perspective. And I think it will enhance the instructional program as we move ahead. And I think, I can't say enough how important it is, I think, for people to try to attend if they can.
Thank you, Charlie. Are there any other reports? I know Morris County School Boards Association is having their meeting on November 20th. The topic is STEAM. And two of our administrators will be presenting, Ed Fleckman and Sandra Shortz. So board members, sign up and attend if you like. Any other delegate liaison reports? That, or what's that? Any PTC liaison reports?
I have one, Karen. It's only not a PTC, but every year the Lazar School runs a breakfast for bus drivers. And I was very impressed by it. It's not just the breakfast, but Mr. Priscilla was able to review with them the laws regarding HIB. And it was a nice program for about 45 minutes in it. The class, which class was it, Paul, help me out there?
The home?
The home, home med class, basically. They were able to cook things, and the parents donated stuff. It was very nice. I know the two bus companies that were just around, they were there, the representatives. And I was very impressed by it. It was very nice. I know Dr. Shortz was there, Dr. Freed was there. Andrew was here, maybe not this time, but... It was very well attended, and I think it's a combination of appreciation and also reviewing what's required by law.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, I'll open it now to the public for any questions or comments, items on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, closed public participation. Yes, yes. I will reopen public participation for items on the agenda.
Sorry, that's too slow. So I have a question...
Just need your name and where you live.
So I have, my name's Stephen Benno from Fort Hillcrest Road in Toaco. I have a question about the lockdown. I know that you're going through reviews, and look forward to the results of that. The one thing that was pretty clear is that the cafeteria is especially, especially vulnerable during, you know, potential shooting or, you know, other emergency situations like that. And it was pretty clear from the response from the students that they were very aware of that danger. There's a lot of fear among the students that were in the cafeteria, a lot of them fled outside. So my question may be more to the police protocol, but is there some protocol to secure the cafeteria quickly when something like that happens? And, or, you know, and what steps can be done to secure the cafeteria quickly to pace up an emergency like that?
So we're certainly aware that any large group environment is going to be particularly vulnerable. The protocol that's in place now, Doug Sanford, our high school principal, is in the rear of the room at this moment. The protocol right now, I believe, is that our students are to go to the doors behind us into the kitchen area, which is quite large. And those doors do lock, and it's supposed to seek shelter in those areas. In the meantime, we do have doors presently that do not lock. And we are looking to make those changes as quickly as possible to create locking doors so that we would have the benefit of having the exterior doors able to be locked as well as shelter in a sit behind second set of lockable doors. So we are moving ahead to do that. Has Paul up?
By the way, that was an excellent question. I'm sorry to raise that. I hadn't thought about it. Hadn't, you raised it for me, I forgot about it. But following up on that, has there been any thought as to putting any kinds of blinds or anything on the windows, doors, so people can't see in? Because I think other rooms have blinds on there.
Classrooms do have a means to, in fact, block the view in, yes. We have not thought in those terms. I think we have, as you can see to your left, a huge amount of windows, and it makes the room very vulnerable from the outside. One of the, one of the steps I think the board is aware that we're taking is to use this film that I'll call it, which would, in fact, tint exposed windows like those so that if there's somebody outside trying to look in and determine what's happening inside, they are not getting the true picture because it doesn't allow them to actually look in and see clearly. And it also, if someone's trying to penetrate, that glass holds the glass together, making it more difficult to enter the room, thus giving people inside more time to go to a safe area. So we are looking into those areas as well.
Anyone else in the public for items on the agenda? Okay, closed public participation. And entertain a motion for items J to O.
I'm moving.
Charlie?
Second.
John? Thank you. Any questions on J? K? L? N? N? O? Provo?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Ms. Newby?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Motion back.
Thank you. Under general board comments, I would like to congratulate Mr. Michael O'Brien, who will on November 15th, or November 15th, I believe, oh, November 14th, be inducted into the Montpel Township High School Hall of Fame. He'll be inducted under the category of... Congratulations, Mike. Also, I don't know if anyone caught, in the neighbor news, the fact that the Lazar Middle School, their program, the Lazar News Network, will be featured in the Emmy-winning educational program, Classroom Close-Up NJ. They'll be taping a segment, they taped a segment last week. And the scheduled air times are for, in 2015, for March 1st and 7th, and April 5th and 11th. So congratulations to that program, and we'll see our, that program and our children on television on those dates.
Karen, last Sunday, I had the pleasure of attending the NEF fundraiser. It's a, the animal matter is extremely successful, raised a lot of money, had a lot of students modeling clothes for a good cause, and it was a lot of fun. So, you know, kudos to NEF for a great fundraiser.
I sent the board an email about participation in the Eagle Scout Corps of Honor on Sunday, November 16th. I had originally responded I'd be able to go, but I will not be able to. If anybody can attend in my place, I would really appreciate it. It would really be the first time an Eagle Scout not have representation from the board. If, if we're unable to attend, it's at 3 o'clock on November 16th. I included the details in my email. So let me know so I can pass them along to the Eagle Scout's family. Under general board comments, I'll open it up to the public now for anything you'd like to talk to us about.
I'm Stephen Benno from Fort Hillcrest Road in Toaco. And I know it's come up in previous board meetings. I have a passion for foreign language, and I'm trying to strengthen that in our district. And so I would like to share my older son's experience going through French and my opinion of it. So first of all, in 7th grade, they have exposure to foreign languages. He had one marking period, well, so starting in elementary school, they had some Spanish. In 7th grade, they had one march to expose them to the culture and a little bit of the language. They had one marking period of Mandarin and the culture and the language. But they didn't really learn a foreign language. They were exposed to it. But if you're going to learn a foreign language, the sooner we start teaching these kids, the better. In 9th grade, so he took French, he took French again in 8th grade for a full year. But he took it in 9th grade, but the French 1 and 2 classes were combined. And the kids were really lost and really struggled with the class. In 10th grade, he took French 3, but now that's combined with French 3 and 4. And when I went to the, and I understand from my son that they were going to make the class more culturally based, as opposed to, I don't know what, language-based maybe. But when I went to the back of the school night, I asked the French teacher, "What's the incentive for a French 3 student this year to take French 4 next year if they're just going to be repeating the same class?" And her answer was, to me, was that, "I don't know." And so I'm very concerned. And I believe very strongly in foreign languages. I believe that it exposes us to experiences that are beyond our borders. I believe in international travel. My family happens to be French-speaking. My parents are native French speakers. So I was very disappointed at the level of French that he's getting. I feel like they're just checking off the boxes on their transcript that they took three years, four years of French. But when they go to take exams in college for their placement, or they go to order from a menu in Paris, no one's going to care what's on their transcript if they can't speak French. So I asked, so I was unclear, I'm not quite sure what they're learning this year. If it's cultural, or they're actually learning the language. I know he had a test in grammar. He told me that the highest grade in there was a 60, so the teacher has to start over again. I'm not trying to bash the teacher, I hope you understand. But I'm concerned about the program itself. So how come, and, I mean, so for me, I have a very vested interest in him learning French. But when he told me about this at the beginning of the year, I told him, "You know what, maybe you should take Spanish. Maybe you'll learn something that you could use." So I'm very concerned. And I think that, you know, this spiral curriculum of exposing our kids to things but never really teaching them anything. I mean, how many different languages do they have to count to 10? Or say the different colors in? Why don't we teach them, you know, we don't have to expose them to three or four different languages. Let's teach them a foreign language at a level where when they leave here, they'll be able to use it. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen.
So I can respond, and Andrea, if there's anything you'd like to contribute, you can certainly do that. I don't know if you had the opportunity to speak to our supervisor of oral languages and any of your, as concerns came up, you'd get a chance to do that. But she's always available, you know, for that conversation. I think that would be a good idea. I encourage you to do that. But, so let me just give you a little bit of the history I know about the oral language program here in the schools. When, this is my 50th year in the district, when I got here, there was actually no requirement that students took a full year of oral language at any time in middle school. It was, take it if you'd like to, but you don't have to have it. Interestingly enough, the state requirement in oral language is one year. Our school district requires two full years, which I think is at least a step in the right direction. After being here for a year, we looked at the area of oral language, and we made it then a requirement for students to take a full year in 8th grade and to be involved in what you're calling that exposure program in grades 6 and 7, taking a quarter in each of the four offered languages. of the four offered languages. I can tell you that, that concept was met with a lot of resistance from community members who felt that at the middle school, we were, we were taking away too many options and choices in other areas that our students had been historically able to take courses in, such as music and art, TV production, computer education, myriad of courses that are available to them. Nevertheless, we went ahead with this concept of at least a full year at the 8th grade level. Lisa Howard, our world language supervisor, would actually link us to begin world language as a full-year program in grade 7, and offer Level 1 in grades 7 and 8. That two-year program would be solid foundation in Level 1, and then students moving into the high school in Level 2. That's something I think we should explore very seriously. These combined courses, where we're looking at French 1 and 2 together, and French 3 and 4 together, I imagine that's taking place when the enrollment is not high enough to offer single courses, but I think we should look at that very seriously because I understand the concern that you're, you're talking about. What is the incentive for a French 4 if, in fact, the student's going to repeat that French 3, 4 curriculum again? So we will look into those concerns, and again, I would encourage you to speak to Lisa Howard, our supervisor of world language. She would very, be very happy to have a conversation with you about the concerns that you're bringing up.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Okay, did we have other comments on the board?
Would you adjourn?
Would you adjourn?
Second.
John. Thank you, everyone.